Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Breezy Point, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I will call the meeting to order and ask for approval of the August 10th minutes.
So moved?
Have a motion?
We have a second.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion of those minutes? If not, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion passed. City Council, he is on report. Councilman Bakken is not here tonight. He's under the weather. Joe, with you?
Sure.
Give a report.
The opt-out ordinance that was recommended by the planning commission was adopted. It implies second edition, and what is approved. A final levy is set at 5% increase. And now that down, who we've heard before, a final levy. Golf cart age restriction, we made it 15th, and actually golf cart drivers have to be at least 15 years old. And the property trade request, pay property back here, and so you all want to trade a lot of cities that have continuous laws, and they approve that.
How do you control the 15-year-old age limit for a golf cart when they're not required to have a driver's license at that point?
It'll be one of those things that the cops have to work with.
I see.
It is an enforcement issue.
Yes, it is an enforcement issue. Okay, thanks.
I mean, if they're obviously 12 years old, and they're early sealed, or disturbing, they will be stopped.
Isn't it also an insurance issue?
It is an insurance issue.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions? Council report. If not, we'll move to open forum number one. Would anyone like to speak during open forum number one? If not, we'll close open forum number one and move to the next item on our agenda, which is a public hearing to consider interim use permit application for home occupation pet grooming. We will open the public hearings to review that application and ask the applicant if they would like to make a presentation. If you wouldn't mind just saying your name and address?
Sure.
Yes, please. Please do.
I'm Lindsay Bitner-Zabrowski, and my address is 12129 County Road 11 here in Breezy Point. I'm looking to get an interim use with the potential of buying a property on Dove Street. It's a 20-acre parcel, which would allow me to then bring my grooming business, which I currently have established in Cross Lake, to shift it to home if we were to purchase
We have your application.
Mm-hmm.
I assume everyone has had a chance to review it. Do you have any questions?
I just have one. How much business do you have now? What are you anticipating for it going to be?
I'm not anticipating growth. I'm kind of at a place where we need to kind of make a choice as a family, so I'm trying to look to just maintain. So currently, I do anywhere from 20 to 30 dogs per week, and the number per day would vary on time of year. When my son's in school, I usually do five days a week with my limited hours, and then in the summer, I do longer days but less days of working, so I can be with my son more often.
And you won't be housing the dogs now?
Nope, no boarding, nothing like that. Nope, just grooming from home.
So people don't drop their dog off and pick it up the next day?
No.
No?
Nope. And the only thing in here that I just kind of wanted to bring up would be one of the conditions would be just for four years, well, it looks like it's a little over four years, but if we did purchase this property, we would ask the commission to make that a longer period of time. That's just a big investment for our family to shift it home, and then in four years, if we couldn't get it reapproved, that's kind of a situation for us just as a family.
You understand an interim use permit does mean limited time by definition?
Right, right. So what we would either be asking for is that stays with, follows us as long as we own the property until we sell, or at least 15 years is what we would hope. And over that course of time, I would assume my business would just kind of keep going less and less, but I would hate to make that investment without knowing, you know, more than four years, if I could then continue grooming from home.
Question on the drawing shows a proposed septic system. The house currently has one.
Yeah.
Has it been deemed that this current system is inadequate for the expansion with the grooming and so on?
No, it's just located on the other side of the home, so it's quite a distance away from...
So it's easier to put in a new one than try to piggyback off the other one?
Yes. Yep.
20-acre parking shouldn't be an issue?
Right. And I'm not looking for signage either, you know, just kind of, I'll probably have some sort of a little statute, and my client will know where it is, but within a year, everyone should kind of know where it happens.
Any other questions?
Unlimited time seems kind of, I suppose, there's a lot of invest to move out there, and yeah, I can see it, but...
Thank you. Julie, would you like to discuss your staff review?
Sure.
Okay.
This is an interim use permit application for a home occupation, and in the staff report is the definition of a home occupation, which states it's a use of a commercial nature conducted by an occupant of the dwelling entirely within the dwelling or in the accessory buildings, which is clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling for residential purposes. This is proposed to be in an accessory building that's pre-existing. An interim use permit is actually the same type of a permit as a conditional use permit, only that it carries with it a time limit, and it is something that is not recorded with the county recorder. Again, this is a proposed purchase. It's a permitted interim use in the wooded residential district. This piece of property is located in an area that's zoned wooded residential. Again, it's a 20-acre parcel. Staff's findings are that it meets the terms of a conditional use or interim use, and it's, the applicant has filed the appropriate applications, paid the appropriate fee. We've noticed the public hearing this evening to all property owners with 350 feet, and we've given published notice also. We would recommend that the, staff recommends that the IUP be approved. We do have a few conditions that the commission can consider. Some of the recommended commissions would be that there be no outside storage, a nameplate sign only, limit the maximum employees to two, all activities be within the existing accessory building, no accumulation of garbage and animal waste, and the interim use permit is for pet grooming and pet grooming only. And we would, staff would recommend a five-year period before, and then a review after that five-year period. I know that's not what the applicant is seeking, and I think that's maybe something that the commission can have a little conference about or in or debate, or however they want to consider that. Typically, interim use permits come with a time limit.
Questions of jury?
Couple, probably dumb, but would there, if that outbuilding with the septic added and plumbing and whatnot, would there be a problem if that became a temporary residence for anybody or not?
Hadn't really thought about it, but they would have to get a building permit in order to bring it up to code. It would have to meet code.
Otherwise, I mean, that wouldn't affect this if they wanted to go through that and be able to put a mother-in-law out there?
No.
Okay. And do we need, do we need to make a condition that the septic be put in, or is that, I mean, they're going to have to have someplace for that water to go?
And that's certainly an acceptable recommendation and/or a condition that could be imposed.
Okay. That's all the questions I have, other than I would like to add probably the fact that the septic system does go in, just to make sure that it's covered by any water issues that would be out of the grooming business.
Well, the, in order to put in a septic system, they have to apply for a permit to do that. They have to have it designed appropriately for the use, and the use is going to determine what the, you know, the sizing and that type of thing.
You know the drawings show that there is to be one in there?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a separate permit that comes from, and we don't do those internally anymore. They're done through the county.
Okay, so they need it, but they don't need it from us?
They don't need the permit from us, no.
Okay.
But they need a permit in order to put in a septic system, and it needs to be adequately sized to take care of the use.
Okay. And you did understand that, I hope? Okay. No other questions?
Are there any public statements? Any statements, anything anybody would want to say regarding this application? If not, we'll close the public hearing on this application and move to our next agenda item, which is our official action on this request. As usual, we have a recommendation of a resolution by staff. Is anyone prepared to make a motion?
No, but I have some comments.
Okay.
A couple of things. I agree with you, Larry. I think the drawing shows that the septic is proposed. I think it should be added as a condition, that, you know, it has to be done. And I have to say that I would be opposed to giving them a completely open length of time. I think if the business goes well, we would have no reason to want to pull or not renew, as far as I'm concerned. I think to have it for five years, and if everything then has gone well, maybe at that time, consider extending it to an unlimited period of time, but I would not be in favor of that being extended now. And I should point out that on one sheet, it says 2020, the actual resolution, it says 2021.
Jury.
But then it also says Larry, nearest chairperson, and...
Thanks on that one. The intent is for it to be 2020 or 2021?
Actually, the five-year period would be 2021.
We'll make that change. Thank you, Peggy. Roger?
No, I agree. Cut, 2021. I think, sorry, boarding dogs there, then you can do something about it. Too open, it's too open. That's what I think. That's it.
Claire?
Nothing in addition?
Okay. I trust that all of you have reviewed the findings, and if you have, are those findings acceptable for granting this interim use permit? Claire?
Yes.
Peggy?
I would be fine with it as long as those two conditions are...
Yep, the same thing with two conditions added that we just talked about.
Clarify two conditions, the septic tank and the residential, or what is the other one?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, just reaffirming that we are not going to extend the permit for beyond five years.
All right.
So reaffirming the 2021 date.
Okay. Would someone care to make a motion?
I would make a motion. Oh, Jerry's got a question.
Oh, Jerry.
Just for clarification, the condition could read, "Properly sized and permitted septic system shall be installed prior to commencement of operations."
Is that acceptable to everyone?
That may not be to them.
For the subject?
Yeah.
Oh, the subject were 100% on board there.
Okay.
Claire?
Nope, I agree.
Do you have a motion?
I would move that we accept this resolution, PC 1618, with the comments we made, the septic system and the 2021 date.
Okay. Grab a second?
A second.
You have a motion and a second? Discussion of that motion, any discussion?
Nothing else?
If not, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? We will go forward a signed copy to you soon. We will move to our next agenda item, which is an application for a Meets and Bounds subdivision. Jerry, maybe you could go over your staff recommendation?
Okay, this is an application for a Meets and Bounds subdivision under Section 152.40 of the subdivision ordinance. This is an existing 5.9-acre parcel that is located between Piney Way and County Road 4. There's an existing residence on the parcel today. The application is to create two lots out of the one. Tract A would be the homestead lot with 3.9 acres, and Tract B would be a vacant parcel with two acres. The application had been submitted with a survey showing boundaries and existing conditions. The zoning of the property is R2 sewed. There is sewer service to those, to these two lots that are being subdivided. R2 requires a two-acre minimum lot size, so it does conform to the zoning of the property. Meets the terms of a Meets and Bounds subdivision as provided for the, in the ordinance. Staff recommends approval of the Meets and Bounds subdivision.
Questions of jury? Peggy?
I don't really, I had asked him beforehand if this, you know, presuming that somewhere along there, somebody wanted to build on it. He pointed out the envelope for building. I wondered if it was going to in any way have a problem with the wetlands, but apparently within that envelope, there is no problem with that. Do I understand that right?
Yeah, if you look at the survey, the wetlands are delineated on it, and there's a setback from the wetland, and there's setback from the street, and what you have there is each tract has a building envelope indicated, which indicates that that's the area that meets the setbacks, that's the area that you could put another structure into, and the type of thing that you probably need to design a building for the lot rather than just the opposite. We're not trying to create something where you'd have to issue variances in that type of situation.
Claire, any motion?
Yeah, in Meets and Bounds, you've got the minimum size is two acres, right?
In that zoning.
Yeah, and it doesn't matter that some of that two acres is wetlands?
It does not.
It's just, it's got to be two acres, and so the wetlands doesn't become an issue for, at least those rules, they just could maybe be an issue when you want to try to build something.
It would be, it would be a big issue if, in fact, you were proposing something to have one lot that was only wetland and the other lot being the buildable portion.
What would you do with a wetlands lot?
I don't know.
That was all it was.
I'm just using that as an example, but in the, in this case, there is a building envelope on both lots. They can continue to use it, the wetland just becomes part of the property. It's kind of like Lakeshore in that area that has a lot of the marshland, and pretty typical in that area.
Okay.
You get to pay more taxes.
Is Debbie here? Do you have anything, Deb, that we need to know?
No, nothing.
Okay. Any other questions?
I assume you're probably going to sell, but that's why you're breaking it off. I guess it doesn't matter if you're selling it or not, just subdividing it, right?
Again, I'll ask the question after your review of the findings. Are the findings acceptable for the approval of this application?
Yes.
No problems.
Okay. Someone prepared to make a motion?
Sure. I move that we accept this Meets and Bounds proposal as written on the resolution.
You just need a simple motion to approve that Meets and Bounds...
Division.
Division, subdivision.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second? Discussion of the motion? Not all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Votes the same? Motion passed.
That were easy.
Too many.
We were coming up.
Next item on our agenda is discussion of animal husbandry, and specifically work that has been done by a couple of committees, one of which I said I would attend and ended up that I couldn't attend because I was doing grandchild daycare. But it appears to me the committee has done...
That was a job.
Yeah, it's homework. Thank you for all of the work that has been done. Who would like to go over that work for us? Joe, I guess.
Well, at the last meeting, we talked about changes that are included in the report, but the changes at the last committee meeting were recommended to the planning commission for consideration. We would make one animal unit five acres. The current standard is one per one acre. We would make a minimum for animal husbandry a five-acre parcel. The animal chart would be simplified to numbers rather than animal units. The number of specific types of animals was somewhat arbitrary, but the committee had agreed to changing the chart to allow for one cow or horse per five acres, two pigs per five acres, 20 sheep or goats per five acres, and fowl at 50 per five acres as maximums in terms of density. It would allow interim use for animal husbandry in wooded residential estate lots, requiring a minimum of five acres. Allowing animal husbandry is allowed use with a minimum of five acres in the urban reserve district, and then no on-site slaughtering of animals. And so that's really the changes the committee discussed for your consideration.
Those were changes made to the work that the previous committee had...
Correct.
Okay.
It modified the, we were at two and a half acres, we went up to five, and we changed the animal units slightly, so that you can have fewer animals on a bigger parcel.
So the question is, is the commission...
Is the commission satisfied with the committee's recommendation? And if so, we need to call a public hearing, and I need to put this in ordinance language for a public hearing at our next meeting.
So I will ask each member if this is, if the work done by the committee is acceptable to you?
It is to me, but my question was, and I just thought of it when I walked in here, if you bought four acres two months ago, with the understanding that a cow, well, you can't have it.
Answer would be no.
Okay, then you answered it. Otherwise, I have no cow.
Yeah, can't have a cow.
Yeah, can't have a cow.
No supply store property.
I'd like to say thank you to Larry, first of all, and I know I've given him a bad time about this, but I think he's done really yeoman's work. I don't agree with all of it, but that's a personal preference. There's a couple of things I want to ask. Are there any five-acre lots in R1?
I don't believe so, but there maybe could be. I'd have to look.
Okay, so are there any five-acre lots in estates reserve?
I believe so. Urban reserve or estate lots residential?
Estate lots residential.
I believe there are.
Okay. And wooded residential, there are obviously?
Certainly, and wooded residential.
And that's where the majority of them are. I would prefer to not see animals anyplace other than urban reserve. I understand the sustainability issue, and I don't disagree with it, and so, you know, I'm coming from a personal point of view. I would rather not see them there. I think it's really good that we are talking about an interim permit everywhere, first of all, because for obvious reasons, it stays interim then, and we can get rid of it if we need to. I would prefer, if it moves forward as an ordinance, that we not have large animals on the estate lots. Fowl is one thing, a cow and a pig are, in my opinion, very different, a far cry difference. I like the fact that you're talking about no slaughtering. I wonder how that's going to work, because for a lot of people, if they have chickens, that's one of the reasons they have the chickens, is so they can slaughter them to eat them besides just laying, so I wonder, I mean, that's part of, that would be part of the nuisance ordinance, I would guess.
That's in the chicken permit as well. They can't slaughter.
Can't slaughter, okay. So even if they go with that, okay. So I guess, I like the fact that they went just with a straight animal unit, not this waste, that was a waste of time, in my opinion, because nobody could understand it. I like the idea they included all the fowl under one category, rather than having separation for chickens, ducks, geese, and apparently turkeys also. I think it's good to include goats with sheep, because they're, in my way of thinking, they're a lot of the same thing. I guess I have some concerns, which I've expressed before, about the whole home business thing. We just approved a home business for dog grooming that, to me, doesn't seem any different than somebody having a home business to raise sheep and use the wool to sell or make clothing with. I mean, to me, it's still a home business. And so I'm unclear about how you differentiate that in an ordinance. You know, do you have to say it only has to be used for personal use? I don't know. I don't know what the answer to that is. So basically, all I'm doing is throwing those comments out. I also am glad that you've got the kennel issue kind of settled there, too. I think that clarifies kennels for cats and dogs and... I think that clarifies kennels for cats and dogs and however that's gonna go. So those are the things that I appreciate seeing the difference on.
Larry?
One of the things that we had discussed when we were talking about this is when you're looking at, you know, wooded reserve or whatever it would be, is two and a half acres, which we've got, we've doubled that, is roughly the size of a baseball field. So that's a pretty good size parcel of land to have if you've got a horse in it. But we're saying you have to have two baseball fields to get your horse. And that's not, that shouldn't infringe much on other people, because that is a pretty good size parcel. And I thought we compromised a lot in fighting this thing out, and we knew that not everybody would be 100% on it, but most issues tend to be that way. So anyway, I appreciate your understanding on this thing, and hopefully you can vote for us, but we'll see what it does.
So the question is, are we ready as a commission to conduct a public hearing on this ordinance?
Requesting public hearing.
Requested.
Just to answer one of Peggy's concerns, how do you distinguish between a home occupation and the animal husbandry? Well, they're both regulated by interim use permits under this program. They weren't before. So you do have some control with the issuance of an interim use permit on both of those based on the conditions that you set when the permit is granted. So I think they're regulated a lot better than they were before.
Can I ask a question that's kind of irrelevant, but it really isn't? Ordinarily, what is the length of time on an interim permit? Is it usually five years?
Typically, I think it depends upon the use. You look at an interim use or a conditional use, and it's kinda like you're in eternal probation. Because if you don't conform to the terms of the conditions, the permit can be anned.
The problem is, as we all know, enforcement is an issue. I mean, we just had a semi that taught us that that's a big issue. And so, you know, it's easy to say, well, we give them, somebody, and I'm not talking about the dog grooming, I'm talking more about animal husbandry, we give somebody an interim permit of five years, and it probably will take us half of that time to get that permit withdrawn if there's some violation. Is there some way, if we go with the permits for animal husbandry, that we can at least start with using a much shorter period of time than five years?
I think that's up to the resolution that's granting it. That can be a term of the, or a condition of the permit.
You'd have to give them notice period to correct, and usually that's somewhere between 30 and 60 days, depending on what it is. If they don't correct it, you call a public hearing to revoke the interim use permit. That requires notice, and notice not only to the property owner, but also to the abutting properties. You held your hearing, and you can yank it. So it can take somewhere between three and six months maybe at the most to get that accomplished.
Which, you know, if you're a neighbor who's unhappy with what's going on, would probably seem like a lifetime, but, you know, I understand, I understand the issue with it. Something else that occurs to me, and I know that there's lots more discussion about animal husbandry, but it does really seem to me, you know, the dog grooming business, okay, you notify the neighbors around there, but this is an issue that's gonna infect the entire community. Is there some way, when we have a public hearing on animal husbandry, that we can make sure the general public knows about it?
There's published notice that's required in the papers, and then there's also, I guess that's really about it, you know, because there is no specific property we're talking about.
Exactly, that's my point, yeah. It's open to the whole community.
You'd have to stand out here with a sign saying public.
There could be articles in the paper, articles, not, you know, not just a notice that nobody reads sadly.
Larry, are, do you feel, Roger.
Too many Larrys.
They're all Larrys.
Do you feel that we're ready for a public hearing on this matter?
I would say yes, but, you know, it does eliminate a lot of area.
I don't know. Is this something, Joe and Jerry, where you do, I know we had talked about meeting with the council, now they sat in with you, right? Somebody from the council?
Mike, right.
Okay. So there's been, yeah, so there's been some discussion there already, so that when this comes up, it would be coming up as a public hearing in front of the planning commission?
Correct. On our agenda, we're supposed to meet with the city council. Is that something you could discuss at that time and then have a public?
Well, the meeting we did have, did have two representatives from city council, and there was going to be two from planning, and then the two experts. But we don't always get everybody that we try to get.
Consensus to move forward?
Consensus to move forward. Moving forward would mean a public hearing?
I say yes.
In favor of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is discussion of joint city council, planning commission meeting. Joe, do you want to just kind of brief us?
Well, there's been some discussion at the council level that they'd like to have a joint meeting with the planning commission, and in talking with the mayor, he would like to lead the meeting and talk about the future, somewhat in line with visions for a future comprehensive plan, but there also may be other issues. Peggy suggested at the last meeting, I believe, that it would be important to talk about, you know, the look of the corner, shall we say. And then I'd also like to get some feedback about dates that may not work for a joint meeting. Peggy had already told me that the week of September 26th is out for her in auto. Are there other problem times for any of the commissioners?
This would be it. Evening meeting?
Probably, yeah.
Is this a representative or two from each, or everybody from each?
Everybody. That's the plan.
Are you doing park and recreation, too?
Well, I hadn't really talked about having park and recreation involved.
Well, whatever day the practice round of the Ryder Cup, that's out.
That starts on the, well, the Ryder Cup starts on the 30th, so it's probably the 29th, 28th.
Twenty ninth, I think.
Are you going down?
Yeah. Should be fun.
Are there any proposed dates from the city council?
No, I was just playing. I was gonna, we're gonna bring it to the council meeting at the, with the October, excuse me, the October council meeting, and I'll talk about setting a date. I just wanted to get, you know, some preliminary stuff done.
Could be in October or November.
Couldn't happen before the council meeting.
No. So likely would be in October.
Maybe what you could do is, you know, see if they'd come up with two dates, then we could see what'll hit the most people, I guess.
Sure. Well, I think that's okay.
So our challenge then would be us and you guys just come up with at least a couple, three dates in October that would work?
Or dates that wouldn't, yes.
Or dates that wouldn't.
Yeah.
Probably easier to deal with.
And the timing of this was gonna be evening, right?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
And then are there other issues that you feel you'd like to have addressed? Not off the top of your head? I think Peggy's idea of the corner is a great one.
Can we think about that and maybe just even send you an email and say, and, I mean, you can always turn them down and say, no, we don't wanna talk about that, but, you know, throw some ideas out.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
I'll give you an example. We've talked so much here about CUPs, IUPs, and I do understand the difference, and I understand why, and, you know, whatever, but I guess because a CUP, for example, goes with the property, which could be a very long period of time.
Yep.
I keep, yeah, I keep wondering, why do we have CUPs? What would be an advantage in just going to an IUP? And to me, that's something that would be obviously a council decision, but we're the ones that have to sit here and talk about it, and so.
Some items just have to be a CUP, don't they?
Well, not necessarily. I mean, some uses you'd want as a CUP because of the permanence of the structure or whatever. But years ago, there was no IUP. It was all CUPs. And then the legislature changed it to have them attached to land, and so there's sort of been this change in the way things are thought of and done.
And also, I wouldn't mind somewhere there, and you can mention this to Tom, some sort of a discussion about the relationship between the city council and the planning commission. Not, and I don't mean that in a negative way, I mean, I wish we had more communication.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? Because sometimes it seems cumbersome. We make a motion and pass it, and it goes to them, and they reject it, and it comes back to us. And maybe we could've saved about six months of time on some of this stuff if we had, I don't know what, a different way of communicating, or more joint meetings, or more opportunities to talk, other than.
Sure. Okay.
Boazon, I think, bridges that just a little bit.
Yeah, because he attends both of them. Because Joe and Jerry, most of the time.
Which, you know, I'm glad that you guys are able to do that, to come and talk and whatever, and tell us what's going on, and if we miss it, you know, or whatever. And believe it or not, I do watch some of the city council meetings, sometimes interesting to watch them.
I'm retired, so I just go just for something.
Boredom?
Well, not boredom. It's kinda interesting.
Yeah, it is. But anyway, then, if we could, if we could send you ideas that.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. I think that's a good idea. Well, that's all I really have there.
Okay. Other?
There is one other thing, just a reminder that Peggy and Larry's terms are up to the end of the year, so if you'd like to renew, we'd love to have you. Just keep it in mind.
Take that under advisement. Who besides me?
You and Peggy.
Okay.
We will then move to our next agenda item, which is open forum number two. Would anyone like to speak during open forum number two?
I'm not sure. I may have, I don't have this as a third issue.
Okay.
Did I miss that at such a clock?
Yes.
Yes.
You did.
Too late recently to comment or ask questions. Should I just talk to someone afterwards?
Either way.
Sure. If there's, if there's, we did approve it. We did approve it, but if there's anything that you would like us to know that is what the open forum is for.
Okay.
Would you mind coming upfront and just telling us who you are and where you live?
No relation, okay.
They were here in light.
Okay. I had a family emergency. I apologize for being late. I know it's very rude. I'm the next door neighbor to the surflings, Angie Littman, L.I.T.T.M.A.N. I'm at 8023 Dove Street. So I'm just right to the east of them, and I was just concerned where this dog grooming business was going to be, whether it was gonna be in the home, or in their pole barn area, or some new construction. They have taken down several trees right on the property line, and of course, that's their right and all, but a lot of the trees fell onto my trees and my property, so as far as being a mindful neighbor the last 12 years, I can't say that he has been. I just have some concerns about what this business is gonna be, and will it lead into anything else such as dog boarding? If so, dog boarding, they haven't been, I think, very responsible pet owners in the past. I think you guys have probably gotten phone calls. The police, I know their pets have been taken to heart. They've just been running around the neighborhood. I've called a few times to the police, reporting their dogs being out barking all the time. So unattended pets, so had some concerns about that, so that's just my only thing, is will this turn into dog boarding, and will the pets be attended to?
Are you aware that there is an intent to sell?
Yeah, and that's on my list of questions, like, is this all just pointless anyway because they're selling?
Maybe I can answer, maybe I can answer the question.
Yeah.
The applicant, because the property has not been sold, the applicant is still the owner today, but they're doing it in conjunction with the proposed owner. The proposed owner is Lindsay Zabrowski.
Okay.
And she has a pet grooming business today in Cross Lake.
Okay.
The application was for pet grooming inside the pole barn or the accessory structure The terms of that, we'll give, we can actually give you a copy of the resolution that approved it, and it'll tell you what the conditions are. But some of your concerns with the past relationship that you had with your neighbors, that probably would go away.
Okay.
And quite frankly, I think if you talk to Lindsay, I think you'd find her pretty easy to deal with and receptive to any concerns that you do have. We were assured that there wasn't going to be boarding.
Okay.
Nor was it approved to be a boarding facility. It was only approved for grooming inside the facility, and those dogs are brought and picked up at the same, on the same day, so there's no overnight type stuff or anything like that. But again, we can give you a copy of the resolution approving it, and I think, I think your concerns with your old neighbors and the trees and those type of things are probably gonna go away.
Yeah, okay. So does that mean the pole barn area?
Did you, do you wanna see the map of it, what it looks like?
Why, the right part is where the property lines, so.
Because it's 90 feet away.
I've got it here, but you want that?
It would be in that area or it's.
Oh.
And we did make another specific system.
You can just have that specific thing on it?
Specific system, condition of the permit.
You know if they're gonna put it in the access period out, if they're just gonna go like that?
No, it sounds like it's right.
I have this one, I don't care. Yeah, you can have this one.
Well, whatever.
If it's a five-year.
Interim permits are five years.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So if they start boarding dogs, then of course they would be violating their.
They would be lifted.
Okay. And if they wanted to propose boarding dogs, they'd have to bring up two, basically, for approval?
Yep.
Then that could make it to the meeting on time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for listening. Sorry, Tom.
That's all right.
All right. Thanks. Anything else?
Before you leave, I'll give you a copy here.
Great, thanks.
Then we will close open forum number two, and I would, I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn the meeting. Meeting adjourned.
What's this picture all about?
That's with the dog grooming, that's the street, dog street.
Oh, okay.
I met Gary last week, and he's adjusted a ton of weight.
Okay.
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 And Peggy should go back to the hall.
And your industry, what is that?
Joe Ears. Nice to meet you.
Hey, you're from where?
I'm from New York.
Hang on a second.
Oh, yeah, you were four.
Yeah, I'm the city council, and Gary, he just gave me a call and said, you should come to a planning and voting.
Where do you live?
On Green Team.
We don't know. That's kind of out of our control. Announce all the names of the city council meetings.
Are you opposed? Is anybody opposing you?
Um, yeah, there's a lot of people around.
Okay. Sorry about that. I was, what I was getting at is a telephone number.
Those individuals.
What made you decide to wanna do that?
Well, I just, well, I just wanted to know more about the community.
Sure, not a problem. Have a nice evening.
This would be a good way to, just recently. Well, I've been in Brainerd since 2007, and I moved to New York.
Oh, I gotta turn everything off.
Husband and we have a one, or two-year-old now, he has two sons, so.